Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting is provided in notice on any between. Head notice posted at the entrance of the board of offices. We now to the Nutley Sun, Starlight, and Harlem News. Bill to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertising the Nutley Sun, posted by District West. This is an official meeting. Please rise from your seats and sign this. Mr. Rogers, will you leave us in the flagstaff?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The vote will be adjourned.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Mr. Spizanty?
Here.
Mr. Maschutola?
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Sauter?
Here.
Mrs. Cisado?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Motion to approve minutes. So, second. And, uh, Kuzinski, full favor?
Aye.
Your response?
I would like to thank you.
Superintendent's report, please.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. We will be moving into awards with our music program. Uh, Mr. Kudari will be making that presentation. Just a few informational items. On election night, we will be taking returns in the high school cafeterias. If anyone is interested in monitoring the results of the election, we will be in the high school cafeteria and that will be available to everyone. Secondly, on the eighteenth, I received a notice two or three days ago that the planning board is hosting a hearing on the proposed 7-Eleven score opposite of high school and they're asking for representation in this body to discuss that.
What's the evening?
May eighteenth at seven P.M. Please note several calendar changes. On the nineteenth, the district will have a single session day. We will be in service in the district on bullying and the new bullying statutes. We will be closed Friday, May twenty-seventh, and Monday, May thirtieth, the Memorial Day weekend. The last day of school is Friday, June twenty-fourth, but the high school graduation is still Monday, June twenty-seventh due to project graduation. That's all I have, Mr. Robinson.
I'm going to save my report for the end of the meeting since it's my last report. I'm sorry.
I'd just like to advise the board that while the major, a major disaster was declared for December twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh due to the severe winter storms that occurred throughout New Jersey, and that disaster was declared in Essex County. As a result, FEMA has been out to the county and to have the Board of Education as well as the municipality file a claim for reimbursement of expenses. And I would like to thank Mr. Nicolet and Mrs. Miletta of my office for all of their time and efforts in putting this together. It required of us to go back over a lot of the payroll detail during that period of time, and we have filed a claim which has been approved for twenty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. And I am told that, that those funds will come back to the district, but probably in various stages. Also, on Friday, we are undertaking a payroll verification which is required by the Accountability Regulations and NJAC six A. Everyone in the, all employees of the district will have to go to a central location in each building, show proof of ID, and sign for their paycheck. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to reintroduce Dr. Labrera, West Hudson Associates, who's been conducting our superintendent search since its inception. And since there's been some perceived beauty as far as where the board is heading, where we were and where we are today, I want to clear out any potential misunderstanding. So, we invited Dr. Labrera to address the public this evening. Welcome and thank you for coming.
Thank you. My remarks are not going to be new information for the board, but we have reached a point, and I'm glad to be able to use the pronoun "we" because I have been involved with the board since we began this a while ago. And I am pleased to give you a status report. The status report was not possible until the events of the last couple of days. And so, that's what causes this report to be given at this point. And what I want to do is I want to summarize where we've been, what has happened, what the board has done, and where we are now. And I'll be fine, President Riley, if you want me to respond to questions that the community may have.
Well, we can, we can open it up at a proper time later in the meeting where we can discuss any of the...
But I will be available to do that at the discretion of the board, okay? Some of you recall that the presentation that we initially made, we made to the board and we did this in a, in a public meeting, and I talked about the importance of doing the outreach before you advertise and before you establish the priority. The board agreed with that completely. And the results of those very positive responses in surveys as well as meetings, and the subsequent board reaction to those was one of agreement. That there clearly was the objective of finding somebody who could be an instructional leader, someone who was well-versed with research, but somebody also had a track record of being successful as an administrator. There were other things, but that's generally where everyone agreed that we would face. And so, those were the things that guided the board's decisions as they went along in the interviews. We have thirty-five people apply, which is a little larger than what most people are getting who are looking for superintendents. This is a very competitive time to be looking for a superintendent for a lot of reasons. We, meaning the search firm, interviewed seventeen people, and we recommended to the board that they interview nine people, and they did. Now, those interviews were approximately an hour in length. Hours was, as well as the board. So, the board interviewed nine people. Some of those people, they interviewed twice. So, that totaled at least fourteen hours, where the whole board was involved. And the board's been doing this since February, and they were diligent in terms of their involvement, and I know that because I sat through all of the interviews. So, this is not something told to me about how those interviews went. I observed them, and I observed them at the board's request. The candidates that they saw, the nine people that they saw, were very talented people, but the issue is not whether or not people are talented. The issue is, in the judgment of the policymakers, which is the Board of Education, which of these people represents the best possible candidate for the school community of Nutley? And the conclusion of the board, after all of these interviews, they were very impressed with three people. Very impressed. Now, I need to say a little bit about the other six, because the other six were, in some cases, sitting superintendents. They were people with doctorates. They were people who have subsequently accepted other positions as superintendents, so these were talented people. But the guideline that the board used, which was a very functional one, is when they were all in agreement on three people, those were the people they wanted to consider. And in addition to those fourteen hours, in many cases, four interviews in an evening, that's a long night for all the board members. There's also the subsequent conversations that happen when you find three people who interest you, and so those hours are added to this. The conversations that the board had with three people, like the conversations with, that people are presently having with other people seeking positions, are things where you say essentially, "We're interested in you. Let us find out if we can come to some common ground and we can find some acceptance to this." Keep in mind that these are three very talented people. One of the, of the three had professional reasons about six weeks ago that prevented that person from exploring this position further. To the other people with whom the board had conversations were, for a number of reasons, none of which having to do with Nutley being an unattractive place, but with some logistical kinds of problems where they were, were unable to pursue it further. The good news is, the third person has addressed those professional issues and has requested, and the board has accepted this, to be reconsidered for this position. The board, who, to a person, very supportive of this person, was not delighted to know that this person is available, and further, this person has made it very clear that not only are those professional matters resolved, he's very much interested in coming, and if all can be worked out under the remaining circumstances of which there are not many, he will come to be the superintendent and be very proud to be the superintendent. Now, as all of us know, there's a board election in two days. And though I think, and not being a lawyer, but having some involvement in this kind, these kinds of things, I think that there, when you're this close to the next board being seated, there's a very clear understanding that the next board has to have a role in this appointment. Has to. No question about that. There's also, in my judgment, and I conveyed this to the board, there's also a possibility for both to be involved. That is, a board can make a decision but couldn't obligate the next board, the next board would have to ratify it. In respect to, or with respect to the next board, this Board of Education has decided not to test that question, but to instead say, "We are very enthused about this candidate. We've known about this candidate. We've been involved with this candidate. Track record is very, very supportive, very good, wants to come, very talented." And what the board has decided to do is to say very simply to the community, "We have found someone that we are very much behind. We are going to recommend this person without conditions to the next board. We know, they know, the community now needs to know, that this person is anxious, because this person has met this Board of Education, very anxious to meet the newly-elected board. Very anxious to meet the community. It is not timely for that to be done two days before the election. But as soon as possible, he would hope, and I think the board would hope, that that could occur. That is, the meeting between this candidate, this very talented candidate, and the new board. That, of course, will be up to the new board as to how quickly they can do that." Now, having said that, I think that is very good news, because I want to assure you that this Board of Education worked very diligently, very conscientiously on what is a difficult task, meeting people, trying to decide what, what would be best. I can say that, having sat through all of these interviews, having carefully interviewed all of the candidates, the response from this board in terms of the way they did this, how they asked those questions, how serious they were, how conscientious they were, is as good as I've seen with any Board of Education in searches, and I've done a number of them. If not better than most, certainly as good as I've ever seen. And the problem that a board always has with personnel decisions is they cannot really spend a lot of time telling people about a lot of the details in the search until you reach a point, and they've reached that point now, because they simply have run out of time with this. If this had happened a month ago, we would be talking about something different tonight, but we're not. And it is, again, out of respect for the incoming board members, that they simply want to say, "We have spent a lot of time. We know a lot about this person. We think this person will be very good here." And they want to encourage the next board as quickly as possible. And they all should obviously know that six of these people on the board are a part of this group that is very supportive of this gentleman, and they anxious that this would happen very quickly, and they know that the school community feels the same way. So, I think that this is very good news at a time when there was more than a little uncertainty about this search. If you're wondering why certain things were advertised, it's because this decision by this gentleman was only made by, by the middle of last week, and there are reasons for that that are unimportant. The reason why I'm not identifying this person is that it is still the next board's opportunity to speak with this person, and they will do that in an executive session and in fairness to everybody, that person's name must be withheld. But this board has reached a conclusion, found someone who is very talented, they're very supportive, and they're pleased to recommend to their colleagues who will be assuming the same position they have shortly, that there is a candidate talented and wants to come. And so, I'm pleased to make that announcement on behalf of the board, on behalf of the candidates, and on behalf of us, those of us in West Hudson who did this search. And I think you should also conclude that when you get more than the number of people that most do, when the talent of the people is generally higher than you see in other searches, and I can speak to that running searches, that speaks to the quality of this community and how attractive it is. And it is that way, and the more time I spend here, the more I see it that way. It's been my pleasure to be involved with this board, this community on this search. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Labrera. This time, I want to have the superintendent just refer to the addendums here so everybody's clear on what we have in front of us. Just move back to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. We have several addendums, and I would like to explain that if you refer to the non-renewal of secretary's contracts, non-renewal of tenure of teachers' contracts, non-renewal of paraprofessions, and non-renewal of teaching contracts, non-tenure, this is something that occurs every year with the exception of the tenure positions. As everybody knows, with the two percent cap, this budget was very, very difficult. In working with the Personnel Committee and the whole board, the Budget Committee, Mrs. Yeaman's, our principals, clearly, we had to pare down some staff. But it would be ridiculous for us to think that we could operate without all of these people on this list. What it will come down to, essentially, after the budget vote on Wednesday, factoring in retirements, and there are several on the list that we did not expect, that we will accept for retirements this evening, factoring in a number of issues, we will really focus in on very specific numbers. We will be looking at every position. We certainly will be looking at tenure, certifications, and this will be an ongoing process. So, please understand, the names that appear on these lists are not going to be eliminated. They have been put on notice pending the outcome of the budget vote, retirements, reconfiguring, several issues. And I will be sending a very personal letter to those maybe half a dozen people that will not be back because of budget constraints, and I will advise them of that. Everybody else should be notified as soon as possible of their return to the district. It's a very, very difficult time. It creates a great deal of anxiety and uncertainty, and we have been meeting daily with union president and vice president and representatives, meeting with our principals, meeting with all concerned to make sure that we communicate as thoroughly and completely as possible on this very, very important issue. So, I'm asking the board to support these addendums this evening, and I will certainly report back to the board after Wednesday on what we are truly looking at regarding the reduction of the rules. Any further? And I'm also asking that how we poll.
Okay. We're tabling number fourteen, Director of Guidance, Schedule E, and Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Schedule F, so for tonight. Table Resolution, Superintendent's Resolution Number Fourteen. Will you be following along?
President, can we get numbers on these?
Here, we're gonna get them.
President?
Yes.
Does, Mr. Zarar, does this address Mike Stoppes' letter that we received concerning the notification?
We're gonna get to that.
Yes, I believe it does. I received a communication from Mr. Stoppes, President of the Union, concern that we notify every union member in a timely manner.
I'll get to that more specifically. You can just sit tight for a minute. I have that on the control when I'll request.
Hold it up.
Please, hold on. Thank you, Mrs. Spizanty, for allowing me to laugh at you. So, let's make revised school calendar, number twenty, resolution number twenty. Non-renewal of secretary contracts, number twenty-one.
Okay. Secretary...
Revised school calendar, going to be addendum number twenty, resolution number twenty. Non-renewal of secretarial contracts, twenty-one. Non-renewal of staff accounting, twenty-two, that would be... Okay. Non-renewal of tender contracts, twenty-three. Non-renewal of paraprofessions, twenty-four. Non-renewal of teacher contracts, number twenty-five. They will run all together. And number eleven, addendum on secretarial side, the second payment of bills of insurance payments. Any committee reports?
Yes.
Mr. Spizanty.
Okay. Negotiations met last Monday with the bus drivers and bus haves, and we, we've had an application for tonight to approve it. And just to give you a brief summary, it's a two-year contract. First year, two percent, seventeen years, zero. We've removed the Benner card, description out, taken them out of traditional health insurance, no longevity for new hires, and a perfect attendance record also is coming out for no, no reward for that. And that's just pretty much the basics. And that's it.
Any other comments? Dr. Reed?
The Academic Committee met this past Thursday, and in reference to the AYP Corrective Action Plan, in terms of year four, we will currently stand in that AYP plan. The idea of actually extending the school day, which we accomplished fairly recently in the zero-nine period, but there's also the proposal put on the table by the U.S. Department or the New Jersey Department of Education regarding actually extending the school year. And an opportunity to try to avoid that from happening, the idea being is how are we going to maximize the actual time that we're spending currently at Nutley High School? Having met with the administration, the idea with the final exam schedule has been a little sketchy at best. I've received several complaints from parents regarding the final exam schedule where, let's see, there's a gap of time, maybe four or five days, in which students are not physically attending class. That being said, the board hopefully will be reord meeting in the next Academic Committee, exploring this opportunity of making final exams not an option for juniors and seniors, but actually making that a requirement, and also looking at how we're going to perhaps move towards midterm examinations. And I think it's something that should be put on the table and hopefully will be explored with the next Academic Committee. And in addition, we're also looking at the grading policy. It seems that there is this disconnect between what's on the actual books right now regarding our actual GPA requirement and how that's being factored. So, that's another issue that the board will explore in the coming months regarding that actual GPA and whether or not that's being later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Any other committee reports? At this time, I'll turn it over to the superintendent to introduce the news boards.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kudari, who is the Coordinator of Music Education for Nutley. As everybody knows, our music program is a work with the women program, not only vocal, instrumental, but the performing arts. Mr. Kudari and his staff have been tireless in raising the bar and maintaining this, so Mr. Kudari, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zarar, Mr. Riley, Board of Education. I just, any opportunity we get to talk about our music program, I'm glad to do it, and I think in this time where we're all facing so many budget cuts and issues, that it's sometimes nice to focus on some of the many positive things we have got. Many of the positive things we have going on in the Nutley schools, one of them being our, our music program. You know, we've, we've earned, we've earned the respect and even envy of local communities. We're still top, one of the top one hundred communities for music in the country. We're, we've performed throughout the world, opera house, from the Opera House in Australia to the cathedrals of Austria and Italy, Notre Dame to Paris to Canterbury Cathedral in England, from Nutley, New Jersey, to the deck of the USS Missouri in Hawaii. In the past twelve years, we've really, we've just raised the level a time and again, from instrumental to our, our choral ensembles, our productions onstage, and we're sort of really proud of the, what we've been able to do here. And so, we know that these are, these are tough times and we're, we're facing tough decisions, but we appreciate the board's support and hopes that we can keep, keep this program going here in Nutley, because I truly believe and know that this is one of the programs that keeps students in Nutley. It keeps our best and brightest in the Nutley schools, and it's important to give them those opportunities. I think it, it's kind of funny that Dr. Labrera is here tonight, and when I first started, they, and Mr. Zarar will remember this, they were, they were attempting to open a charter school, and I think Mr. Oliver would remember too, they were attempting to open a charter school not six blocks from here in Nutley, and, and that would have drained services and, and funds, which, and would not have really affected our budget. You know, you're not going to be buying less books or turning off the heat, but for every student that goes, losing some money. And we worked tirelessly with, with Mr. Labrera, he was the Commissioner of Education at the time, to kind of, to stop that and, and keep our Nutley music students in the Nutley schools. So, I hope we can keep this program going for many years to come to do just that. But we're here tonight because we're, we're honoring a couple of students who have, who go above and beyond, and they have reached the all-state and all-eastern level as musicians. So, I wanted to bring them down here tonight and, and just give them a, a quick token of our gratitude. We have some pen sets and a trophy and a, a picture of yourself, Nicole, which I'm sure you'll appreciate, and some iTunes cards so that you guys can, can keep, keep your music education going and, and researching. And one other thing I'd like to say, we, we often, not just, it's not just about shutting down charter schools and keeping kids in the Nutley schools, but we do a lot to, to support our, our budgets and support the, the projects that go on in here in Nutley. And this referendum, the rumor in right now, I, I would say that, that a lot of these referendums have passed because of the support of our, our music parents and because of the support of the town for our music program. So, I'm going to quickly break the third wall here and look right in that camera and say, "Please support our school budget so that we can keep our music programs going here in Nutley." So, but I'll go on to our awards now. Our first student here is Steven Noakowski, who is a junior this year in the high school. He's in the All-State Orchestra, and he was in the percussion section of the All-State Orchestra this year, and performed earlier this year in Atlantic City as well as at the New Jersey Performing Arts Center. Thank you. Matthew O'Donnell, who made our All-State Chorus this year as a bass. And you know, to make, to make the All-State, All-State level, you go through audition process, regions, then more auditions, and then finally to the All-State level. So, it's not, it's not an easy task to make it to that level. This is Matthew O'Donnell, All-State bass. David Young, also making All-State bass this year. You can get your pen set here, David. All-State Chorus also performs at the Teachers Convention as well as New Jersey Pack. Nicole Costa, she's here, and she's her second year, two years now as an All-State Chorus member, so she has a plaque that we're waiting for the, the inscription there. And then finally, finally, we, last but not least, our senior, Carl's leaving, oh, Nicole's leaving us to Holy Cross?
Yeah.
Yes, attending Holy Cross, but not studying music, studying chemistry. While we have your attention, often, often we think that, you know, music, "Oh, it's just music class," but really, when you're teaching music, you're teaching students to make split-second decisions, to be able to be in a moment and, and adjust to what's going on, whether it's tempo or key change, and, and be ready for circumstances. So, really, the musicians are the better quarterbacks and the better scientists, and because music is language and math and science and all those things, so it really fine-tunes their ability to do those things. So, hopefully, we had some, some part in you making it all the way to Holy Cross. Carl Gilbert, our senior here, is going to Eastman School of Music next year. He's going to be an All-State choir and All-State orchestra this year as well as All-State band, and he was an all-eastern fan, was it? All-eastern band, and, and played a concert in Massachusetts. You can get your pen set here, David.
Congratulations.
All-State Chorus also performs at the Teachers Convention as well as New Jersey Pack. Nicole Costa, she's here, and she's her second year, two years now as All-State Chorus member. So she has a plaque that, we're waiting for the inscription there. And then finally, finally, last but not least, our senior, Nicole's leaving us to Holy Cross.
Yeah.
Yes, attending Holy Cross, but not studying music, studying chemistry. While we have your attention, often, often we think that, you know, music, oh, it's just music class. But really, when you're teaching music, you're teaching students to make split-second decisions, to be able to be in a moment and adjust to what's going on, whether it's tempo or key change, and be ready for circumstances. So really, the musicians are the better quarterbacks and the better scientists, because music is language and math and science and all those things. So it really fine-tunes their ability to do those things. So hopefully, we had some part in you making it all the way to Holy Cross. Carl Gilbert, our senior here, is going to Eastman School of Music next year. As well as All-State Band, and he was an All-Eastern fan, was it? All-Eastern band, and played a concert in Massachusetts. What month was that?
Congratulations.
So Carl Gilbert made it always to All-Eastern level. In 12 years here, as teaching here for 12 years, he's only the second student. The first was Chris Dorjetti, who made it to All-Eastern Choir. Carl was accepted to All-Eastern Choir and Band this year, but had to pick one and chose Band because he's going to be studying euphonium at Eastman School of Music. Mr. Zararo, Mr. Riley. Yeah. Do I need that? Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations to those students. Thank you, Mr. Candary. Bring passion and commitment to this district that's unparalleled.
Product of Nutley schools, that.
All right, this time we come to a portion of our meeting where a lot of members are public and address the board. In this section, we allow questions only on resolutions addressing tonight's agenda. Would regulations allow 20 minutes for this communication? These persons shall be limited to three minutes. And we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak. More than once only after all those have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as chair, and no one may address board members individually. Please come up and state your name and address if you have any questions on resolution items only.
Good evening, everybody. I feel about a nice season. My name's Joseph Russinella. I happen to be the dad of Dr. Michael Russinella, who's the owner of North Jersey Orthopedics and Sports.
I understand. I hate to interrupt you, but this is not the time to speak to that issue. This is a time we hear the public on resolution items only. There's a second portion in the meeting where you're allowed to speak on any topic, and that will be the time we call you.
I'll see you then.
But this is resolutions only. I'm sorry. Anyone who wishes to speak on resolutions items only? Seeing none. Okay. Mr. Zararo, would you move superintendent's resolutions forward as listed?
Mr. President, I move superintendent's resolution 1 through...
You can go right through 25 and just listen for the public excluding the addendums.
I want to read the memorial.
I'm sorry? Excluding 14, which is already on the table.
So would you like me to go to 18 and read the memorial, Mr. Conrad?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let's hold that out.
Okay. I will move resolution superintendent, resolution 1 to 18, as written.
Second? Second?
Second.
Ms. Russo, poll roll.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Mr. President, can I say something on this, on resolutions?
Sure.
I'm going to vote yes, but my problem is...
For what? You have a specific resolution?
Yes.
You're referring to?
Yes. Resolution number 10. Only because, and I don't question the superintendent's authority, not having a meeting before the Open Public Meeting Act, we don't get a chance as board members to ask questions about some resolutions that come up. Including some of the addendum items that come up tonight, we don't have a chance as board members to leave the label then before we come to the Open Public Meeting Act. And I just think that the statement is wrong in what they're forcing us to do. Yes.
Anyone else wish to be heard on the resolution items? Poll rolls.
Mr. Meskortola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Zararo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Yes. Memorial to Alexander Conrad. Whereas with a deep sense of sorrow and regret that the Nutley Board of Education reports the death of Mr. Alexander Conrad on April 10, 2011. And whereas Mr. Conrad was employed in September 1963 as a high school union teacher, in 1972 as a coordinator of attendance, in 1977 as high school vice principal, in 1985 as principal of Lincoln School, and had a distinguished educational career until his retirement in February 1997. And whereas Mr. Conrad won the admiration and respect of his fellow educators and pupils, an exemplifying of all times the finest quality of his profession. Now therefore, may it resolve that the Nutley Board of Education, the township of Nutley, extend its deepest sympathy to the members of his family and, be further resolved, that this resolution be made in part of the minutes of this meeting and may copy sent to the members at this time.
I still move second.
Where's that?
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Meskortola? Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Zararo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mascara, you want to move superintendent's agenda 25 as listed, please?
Would you like to move? Board Secretary? Oh, superintendent? What's that?
20 through 25.
Oh, I thought you said 25. I moved 20 to 25, but I certainly didn't get that in my plan.
Second, Mr. Zararo. I have a discussion. Poll roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Meskortola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, on all, I am paying on the non-renewal of power professionals.
Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Zararo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Sodda, would you move PA resolutions 1 through 10 as listed, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move business administrator, resolution 1 through 10, as written. So move it.
Second. Second, Mr. Kupka. Discussion.
Yes, I would like to have a discussion, Mr. President, on item number 10. Again, lack of information simply because we did not meet beforehand. I don't know what's the change order would be for the provide off-site storage for, off-site storage of $4,000.
Well, just so everyone is aware, this is being charged back to another contract for the change order. But this is why, honestly, we get the packets on Thursday.
I read through the packet, but I'm not going to bother pulling the business administrator. What questions do I have at board meetings? Whether the discussion...
I'll let the PA address it.
This change order is for Sunnyfield Corporation. And the reason for the off-site storage charge of $4,278 is because the supporting wall, which is the wall between the new gym and the old gym at Spring Garden, which is now the cafeteria, there was a delay in erecting that wall. And that wall is supporting the units that are up on the roof. So Sunnyfield had to store the units while they were waiting for GPC to finish the construction of the wall. And therefore, this charge is going to be charged back to GPC.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Mr. Sodda.
Yes, I'd like to, we agree with Charlie that we should really have meetings prior to this closed meeting rather than just going into open meetings. And I know that that is the current law, but I don't like it.
Anyone else? Poll roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Meskortola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, on all communications.
Mrs. Russo? Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Zararo?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. We'll do the second hearing now. Oh, I'm sorry, the addendum number 11, I apologize. And Mrs. Russo, Dr. Reed, Board Secretary, addendum number 11, please.
Yes, I'd like to move Board Secretary, addendum number 11, second payment of bills and board payments. I've listed, I still move.
Certainly.
Second, Mr. Kazinsky, discussion. Poll roll, please.
Mr. Kupka?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky? Mrs. Meskortola?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Zararo?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, in this section, we allow questions and comments on all school-related matters. Regulations allow 30 minutes for this communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes. List and statement in this requirement, as I stated earlier. All statements will be directed to me as chair. Anyone who should be heard this time on any school-related matter, if you might come by and state your name and address.
Apologize for stepping in late too soon. My name is Joseph Russinella, the dad of Dr. Michael Russinella, owner of North Jersey Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Institute. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. I don't know if this is a general request. At one of your meetings in March, a fixture topic, a strong topic, was the power professional. And you, Mr. President, said that you were doing everything along with the board, and you're giving every position within the district ways, somewhere, to try and save someone.
Correct.
Okay, I'm correct on that?
Absolutely.
My son submitted a proposal in November of 2010.
Correct.
Comprehensive sports medicine proposal.
Correct.
Does not only affect the football players, but the entire athletic program and everything about the high school. And the important thing is that he offered it to me for $1 a year. Okay? We never heard any response at all, whether you were interested, you weren't interested, you'd like to speak to him, whatever. Okay, so we waited patiently, patiently. We spotted up with another letter in March. Once again, no response. None whatsoever. Take a walk, we don't need you, we have plenty of money, we don't worry about taxpayers. My question to you is why? Why was it...
Because that's an annual position, so that person who's in that position is in it till the end of the year, and then the new board, when the board reorganizes every year, they either reappoint or put out to an RFP, positions like that. So that would happen at the reorganization, so the next board will put that out to an RFP.
So no one could have sent him a letter and told him that I had to come here tonight to find out?
Again, that comes from the administration. It's not really what we do as board members. We don't, you know, hire and fire, we just...
Can I just go over some numbers with you? Just, it won't take, it'll take a minute. You have a doctor, obviously, football doctor, who works the sidelines. What do we have, nine games, Josh, or, Mr. Zararo, nine games?
Nine games plus playoffs.
All right. Let's say nine games. And the doctor averages three hours a game. So let's say three times 27. I'm not very good at math. Three times nine is 27. Okay? You're paying him $11,500. So you're paying him $425 an hour, okay, for his duties. And you know, we're all talking about saving the taxpayer's money, saving jobs, saving the power professionals. I know it's not a lot of money, but you have to start somewhere. Here's a student, born and raised in Nutley, play ball in Nutley, up-and-coming sports medicine orthopedic surgeon, willing to do it for a dollar that no one has even responded to. That's all he's saying.
Well, again, nobody's saying it's a bad idea. I'm just telling you that the time that that would happen would be when we reorganized and he goes out to an RFP because it's a renewable annual position. And at that time, he would be able to resubmit. And, you know, if he submitted last year back in May, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion.
Yeah, November.
Okay.
All right, so we need to resubmit?
Yeah, well, RFPs will be sent down, I'm sure, based on the new board once they reorganize for those annual renewals.
So he'll receive an RFP?
Well, they'll be publicized and he can respond.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to be heard on all school-related matters?
Morning, Mr. Rogers. My name is Alan Thomas, 108 McKinley Street. Mr. Riley, I just rise to take, not objection, but curiosity at Mr. Kazinsky's comments and Mr. Sodda's comments regarding the need for an executive session to discuss two resolutions that were on here. While I certainly can appreciate, Mr. President, the need for board members to get information, and I certainly encourage board members to ask questions. These resolutions are the types of issues and questions that should be asked in public and not in the executive session. There's nothing privileged about, you know, why there's a change order in an existing contract. I just think those are the types of things, these are the very questions that the public would like to know. Why is there a change order? Unless a board member or a citizen gets up and asks these questions, we don't get to know. So I'm glad that Mr. Kazinsky asked the question because it was very informative for us to know. I don't think that's something that should just be in the executive session. That's exactly the type of question, in my view, that should be asked in public by a board member or anybody else. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to be heard?
45 Hampton Place, this is what's listed in the parent advocacy network. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Education for all the time that you've spent trying to find a new person. I, if it's just nine hours, and Dr. Labrera is for you as well, I know this is a really difficult undertaking, and I'm hoping that this particular person is going to be the one. My only question is, like, hypothetically, would this person be starting July 1st? I'm just wondering.
We're not able to discuss it at this point, but...
Okay, okay. So, okay, I thought I'd just try. Because I'm hoping for that. I have a great deal, I have high blood pressure because of this, so it's really hard for me. Anyway, I want to first tell you some good news, I have good news and bad news. Okay, my good news is, this is actually good news. My good news is, MPAN is currently going toward grants for, to help out, to actually provide a bullying program for, we're hoping for the middle school. If we can raise $5,000 in the grant, the New Jersey Child Assault Convention is going to match that. And hopefully, we can get actually either the middle school and another elementary school. And Mr. Colicchio, who's not here tonight, is, she is giving us a letter of support, hoping, you know, his support for us to get this grant. And we really, we're hoping for that as well. So that's my good news. So, and once we find out we have a grant, and if we don't get the grant, we will find another way to raise the money. Because we know that with your anti-bullying campaign, that's, it's really important for us to really, you know, work together in coming up with ideas to deal with this problem.
It is critical. We're having an service on the 19th, you know, and we have put our anti-bullying teams in place in Chile.
Yes. And that would be really helpful. And I know that there's certain people that are, and I know it's probably in terms of record keeping, and it's Mr. Patello as well?
He is, he is in charge of the overall team.
So will we get a chance to speak to him in regards, or will he be presenting to the public?
I'm sure he will be presenting as we have this, and we must have their place for September 1st, and we are working on that as we speak.
All right. Now comes to my bad news. I received a phone call from a parent, and actually, she's seated right here. And would you like to come up? This is a parent of ours, and would you be telling me?
Hi, my name is Lori Graziano, and I live on 25 Wilson Street in Nutley. And my son Eugene Bassett, he's a student in the Nutley High School. He attends a half a day at Nutley High and a half a day vocational school. Now, Nutley has been running this program for years because I'm a graduate of it, so I know. Just recently, we found out that Mrs. Graziano received a phone call from a member, a staff member from the high school, telling her that that would no longer, that program, Mr. Patibone, I believe, stated that that program would no longer be offered because of state requirements or whatever.
Who was that staff member?
Who's the staff member?
Are we managing guidance?
Yes, with somebody from guidance.
Do we know who the guidance was?
It was child study team. Do you want me to say a name?
But I can address this.
Okay. However, when Mrs. Graziano did get an opportunity to speak to the school official from the vocational school, they stated that Nutley really has no, Nutley, collective Nutley, has no jurisdiction over stating whether or not a child, whether or not they can continue this program. This program is open to all county students. Anybody from anywhere in the county can come to this school and receive this. Now, the examples that they were saying is that they would not be able to provide classes if you wanted to...
What happened was she told me that because Nutley, not just my son, the shared-time students, don't have enough time in the day to fit in all their credits that they need, meaning science, everything, including math. Now, my son originally had gone to vocational school for a computer class, which we come to find out they canceled. What vocational school does is the first year, they send them through all many semesters, and then they find out they live late something else, or finds out my son late something else. Even the shop teacher over there requested that my son be in this class for next year. She told me that I would have to come to make a decision whether or not I want my son to attend West Corwell Vocational School full-time or Nutley High full-time.
All right, I don't want to interrupt you, but the superintendent's... All right, I don't want to interrupt you, but the superintendent has responses?
Yes, I, I've been speaking to Dr. Zelkowitz from the county vocational school. Yes, this came to my attention two weeks ago through a parent call. I contacted Dr. Zelkowitz, and there seems to be no problem with full-time attendance at the vocational school. The issue is part-time attendance, where travel time within eight-period day, there's only so much that students can fit in being on the bus approximately two periods. We're looking into some options. I have also contacted superintendent principals in the area who have students going part-time, and we are trying to come up with a solution to this issue. First of all, let me be very clear, it's an excellent program, and we don't want attendance. We really don't. In my 30 years here, starting at high school, we've always had this program, and it's a very, very important component to the school. So we're not against the program, please understand that, and we will do anything we can, everything we can, to fulfill the requirements and still ensure that children attend part-time. And again, it's a scheduling issue, and we're looking at the state requirements, history, English, math, science, world language, biz ed, and then we're looking at the vocational requirements, and they're a bit different. Some of these are addressed in the IEP for certain students, but not every student. So if you would give me, I would say, today's Monday, it always seems like Wednesday, if you give me a call sometime towards the end of the week, I actually have been waiting for a return call from the director of guidance at Elville, who is, I think has a solution to this problem. And it may, it may include zero period for one course for those students. I'm not quite sure, but we will get creative to, to address that issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
And we share your concern.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just say before you leave, my son, who's now 27 years old, is a part of that program. As a matter of fact, I insisted, because he told me he wanted to go to culinary school, and I said, if you want to go to culinary school, I'm going to tell you that you need to go to the county program, and you need to spend half a day in the high school and half a day in the county program. And he got an A's at the county program at the Roll Tech. So I am a huge supporter of that facility and that program. They do an unbelievable job there, and I will personally do everything within my power to make sure that he's there next year.
Well, that was my other concern also, because I feel like the kids that are starting something, even like the girls that go for hairdressing or students, they're already in their second year, you're going to take it away?
Well, then there's a whole legal issue, so I'm going to ask Mr. Palma, because I think I know the answer to the question, too, Thor. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to be heard?
So, I'll go to 14 Nutley Avenue. I came here tonight, it's a thankless job, but I came here tonight to thank all of you, Vinnie, Walt, Ken, who are no longer going to be here next year, and all of you for your countless hours of service, your hard work. People don't know how many, I guess Dr. Libera said it before, we don't realize how long you guys work at this job, and my family and I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Hi, Jerry Parisi, 350 Chris Place. First, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to address as follow-up what Alan said earlier, Alan Thomas, in regard to the problem that Mr. Kaczynski, Mr. Soder brought up. As a former board member, in the beginning of my term serving, perhaps you were there, we used to meet in an open meeting, but there was no opportunity for the public to speak during that meeting. It lasted generally an hour, and was open to the public. Many times, public people were there, certainly the union president was there, and we would discuss questions we had on the agenda, and we would discuss the addendum resolutions that were given out that night, and we came to conclusions, and it was not confidential issues that were discussed. And then the meeting, the open public meeting, then followed generally about 8 o'clock or 7:30, and that worked out very well at that time, until the feeling was the meetings were lasting too long into the night to follow the one after the other, and the way it was worked out, it was voted to change that protocol, and eventually morphed into what you have now. I would suggest, based on what these gentlemen said, you consider the next board, consider going back to a meeting before this public meeting, which would be open to the public, but you could hash out all of these issues, rather than just getting to them blindly, as to what Mr. Kaczynski and Mr. Soder stated. So I would just make that suggestion. If you don't mind, I do have a question now.
Sure, please.
Perhaps, Mr. Zara, you can answer this, if not, Mr. Riley. There's a list of people that are being noticed regarding non-renewals, including some of the tenured people?
Yes.
And you briefly spoke on that earlier, but could you explain exactly what would work out in regards to how seniority is calculated?
Very interesting question. I've been on the phone with our attorney, with a fellow Chuck Stein from the New Jersey Principal Supervisors Association, our county superintendent. There, you read those statutes, and there are interpretations, and in my six and a half years sitting here, we've never had an issue where we had to make cuts that went into tenure areas. Basically, my understanding is, it's the, the date of the contract when the board takes action, that's when tenure starts to accrue, the time for tenure. So, and, and then, of course, it's the certification. You are, for example, an elementary language teacher, what is your certification, and where are you licensed to teach? So what we're doing is going through the process, and, and as a precaution, for example, we've probably notified more people than we could expect to lose, but we want to be safe as we work through this problem. These are people's careers, and we want to make sure that we do it exactly right and pursue cautiously. What we look at is everybody's experience. We actually, I had the secretaries compile a list of every person in the district, the date of hire, the date of tenure, what positions they held, and what certifications they hold. And that, that's something that we're referring to constantly. But when it comes down to it, it's going to be the date that the, not the board took action, but the date the contract started, which traditionally is September 1st for most people. And we'll, we'll define this further as we go along. I would imagine that within a week, we're going to have most of these things resolved, because we want to then, with the reorganization, keep it back and start stamping for September and be ready to open up. And as you know, we have quite a few administrative positions to consider also.
Mr. Zara, I also would like for you to comment to the public, especially those who might see this, in regards to the vote on Wednesday, that unless it's changed since I was serving, if the budget should not pass, and, and commissioners take action to say cut more money, the board does have the right to file with the county superintendent to demonstrate that further cuts would be a horrible destruction of our education system here in Nutley. And I know you would be doing that, but I hope the public is aware that that would be, in my opinion, the logical and proper mode should the budget fail, regardless of how much the commissioners recommend. I don't see how this district can survive with this number of people being cut, as you pointed out earlier.
Well, this, this board made a decision not to go outside the cap. It's a 2% cap, and this board made sure that everything fit within that cap. They didn't put anything that was allowable outside the cap. They wanted a true 2% increase. We, we are working very hard to maintain all of the programs we have, and in particular, we're most proud not only of, of the academics, which is the core of what we do, but the arts. And you lead and hear all of the programs and arts and extracurriculars and clubs and activities. We pride ourselves on those opportunities for students.
So many names listed.
And, and we're going to be working, and I, I'm working with all concerns to make sure that we, we keep them apprised, keep them informed, and we do this fairly, and according to statute. And hopefully, that's what you consider, Riley, and we'll be back.
One final point, if you don't mind, Mr. Riley, this is for you. I just wanted to thank you for your, your, as president of Board of Ed, the board has done a very good job. And obviously, being the president, you're the person who gets the arrows, you're the person who gets the credit, you're the person who addresses the parents and gets to dress by the parents.
When, when do I get the credit?
Honestly, Mr. Riley, I think you've done a very good job as the president, and I especially appreciate... I especially appreciate the work you did in getting back some very important committees that allowed the board to be so obvious in how they move forward this year. So congratulations on your term here, as well as your presidency. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to be heard on any old matters? I do want to address, since I said I was going to address this later, now I'm going to address it. I received a letter from Michael Stoffer, who's the EAN president, a few days ago, addressing a meeting that we had, not really a meeting, but he had, belonged to the vice president, asked me to go into the order of their meeting and address what took place tonight in the way of non-renewals and notification and, and in this letter, it says here, in a conversation we had Monday, April 4th, we agreed that any employee of the district being affected by the current budget cuts through transfers or RAFs, RIFs, et cetera, we notify them at time of the matter. And what we actually agreed upon, since I don't have the power to do that, what, what I was asked was if I could speak to the superintendent to, to ask if you could actually do that, actually notify people, since they hadn't been notified yet, or some have, most have now, I guess, we've messaged. And obviously, I did that, and since that time, those people haven't notified, and you addressed it tonight, was there any other issues that the young and happy sides, what we addressed tonight as far as...
We're working very closely, I've had for six years with them, to make sure that they express their concerns to me, and I share my concerns with them for the good of the district.
Do you have any other issues you want us to address, if we can, tonight, or...
Not this time.
Okay, good. Seeing that, any old business.
Mr. Rogers? I just want to follow up on something that Mr. Zara said, if I could, if I could. And I guess Mr. Parisi kind of mentioned it. This budget was very difficult to put together, and when we talk about teamwork, I can't help but thank the teachers of this district, who really came through for us at this point in time. So it's a team effort on part of our teachers, the school board, and the citizens, and, and I think it's important that we, we know that. So thank you, Mr. President, for giving the opportunity to speak.
Anyone else wish to turn over? Old business?
Yes, Mr. President.
I guess it could be under old business. We have this flyer in our packet tonight about that hope, making this on the 26th. Certainly, we encourage...
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
I would encourage all of our board members to be there. Certainly, the parents should be aware of it. If they're not, then you need to be there on the 26th at the, at the, back to middle school, at the John Walker Middle School tomorrow night, 7 o'clock. It's important that you shouldn't miss this as a parent, certainly as a board member.
Thank you. And your notifications have gone out, the board should prepare as well. Any other old business?
Yes, Mr. President, and I guess it's still under old business, it's part of our packet. I did speak to Mr. Zara about it. Again, something that I, I find, and I do respect Mr. Thomas, but it's not that I, I, some things, even though they need to be out in the public, I just would like some questions before we bring them out to the public. That's my only concern. The communications, the, the public needs to be aware of everything that's going on, but as board members, I think we need to have a couple of the answers before it is made public. And I'm referring to the suspension list. If you look through the suspension list, and I did talk to Mr. Zara about it, but I received quite a few calls, and, and on there is cyberbullying, verbal harassment, bullying, made weapons to use in class. I know this is exaggerated, but I would like Mr. Zara to clear it up for me and for the parents that have questions.
I believe that our administrators are taking a very, very wide view of any incident that occurs. I liken this to some years ago, when there was a very unfortunate incident where a child was, was killed due to abuse by her, I believe, stepfather. And after that, there was an incredible spike in reports to indict this childhood abuse. Right now, with the focus on bullying and cyberbullying, with seminars that every one of our administrators is attending, and many of our teachers, with the appointment of an anti-bullying coordinator, with the development of bullying teams, with the violence and vandalism reports that are required, and with all of the documents that we've created for people to report incidences, I think people are being incredibly cautious, and when in doubt, they report it. And what they are doing is altercation in a classroom, or an email sent to someone. All these, by the way, I want to be very clear, we take it very seriously. There is, there is no interpretation, there's no anything other than these are the facts, and we're taking it very seriously. And our principals are very, very involved, and they contact parents, they meet with parents, they, they work with children, our SAT coordinators, our, our guidance people are involved in conflict resolution, there's documentation. So you are seeing, I think, a very, very, very exact reporting, and they are not leaving anything up to interpretation. If it's within the parameters of any of the categories, violence, vandalism, bullying, cyberbullying, it's being reported.
And the parents is willing to address it with the...
Yes. Many times, at the high school, middle school level, the parent, this child cannot return the list, the parent accompanies them, and at the elementary school, it's, because of the age, it's, it's, it's a bit different. But I, every time something happens, I receive a call from the principals, they follow it up with the report, they fill out the violence and vandalism report, and I think it's just been very prudent, and all of these issues are being addressed. It's not just paperwork. Behind the paper, there's involvement, there's communication, there's discussion, and there's, there's a plan of action for each case.
Certainly, in response to that, you know, the one thing that this board, and future boards, and past boards are responsible for is policy. And I would say, as a policy committee, you know, we still have, until the reorganization meeting, even though the election is Wednesday, we're still all nine board members until we reorganize. So I would ask the superintendent to get together with the policy committee and look at the policy as far as board member notification. I agree with you. When there are serious issues in these schools, and we find out about it when it comes in our packet, I think it's too late. I think if, if there's a matter of that type of seriousness, we should be notified immediately. At least the president should be notified, and then the president can notify the balance of it. And I think if you make that part of the policy, then the rest is simple.
Point taken.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yeah.
I would like to, Mr. Rogers, Mrs. Russo.
Yes, regarding the revised calendar, the last day of school was changed to Friday, June 22nd.
Yes.
Is that going to be a one and a half hour day, a four hour day?
That will be, I believe, a four hour day, and then Monday is still the high school grad day.
So have we, hopefully, decided not to have that one and a half hour last day of school? We've been having a lot of parents expressing concern, it was very hard to make a range...
There was no difference yesterday with our discussion. And again, until the, the winter left us with the two unused snow days, that wasn't even an option. But now, being prudent, we've tapped it out to the last possible day, it will be a half day, an hour and a half.
Thank you. Also, I noticed the first day of school is a full day of school, and then that's going to be followed by two half-days. Can you explain...
We have to in-service the staff next year with a great many of these bully issues. Again, that could be renewed by the next superintendent, next board. This is what we've put in place for now.
Just a follow-up on what you and Mr. Kaczynski said. I'm concerned about, I know everything has to be reported, Mr. Zara, but I'm concerned about what I read, made weapons to use in class, brought above weapons to use in class. You know, when people see that word weapon, their imagination runs away with them. So what I'm asking is that, and maybe, Mr. Riley, you're right, this has to be part of our policy, and we know what these weapons are. This pen right here could be the weapon they're talking about.
You're not far off on that.
I know I'm not, but, but when it gets put like this in writing, and the public gives a hold of that, it's a whole new level.
Again, we don't, we don't editorialize, we just report it as it is reported to us. We don't make any interpretation when the principal or the administrator words it in that fashion, even though we have a conversation. I'm not going to change that, that's the way it's reported out to me.
Thank you. Anyone else on old business? Any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, it's been said, stated by two former board members, but I think I'd like to say it as a current board member, and I think I can speak on behalf of the six board members who are staying on the board, we would like to thank Mr. Russo, all of Mr. Soder's and yourself, for your dedication, your hard work, we enjoyed working with you, in this past year in particular, with a lot of issues, and particularly your leadership, we've gotten through a lot of things, and we'd like to congratulate the three of you on having served, and thank you, behalf of the board, behalf of the community.
Thank you. Just have your attention for a couple minutes. If you could just have your attention for a couple minutes, I too want to thank my friend Benny Walser, who a lot of people don't know, but he's got to take a call right now, even though our cell phones are supposed to be off. When I was on the board previously, 12, 13 years ago, Walt was then the EAM representative for negotiations, and Walt and I used to negotiate contracts against each other, even though we were on the same team. And Walser, he's been a good friend, and I read his book on how to play golf, and I played today, and it didn't do me any good.
Didn't do me any good.
Ken Riley has been a strong part of our board. No one except past board members and future board members will find out how difficult the time is, it's consuming, it's away from your family, but it's all for a good reason, for our children, for Ken's kids when he were here, for my children, for all of our children, for Debbie's children, of course, and certainly for my grandchildren that are coming through. So I have a little plaque to give to Ken Riley, and I'll read it, if you don't mind. Mine's weighing all over $15. We used to, when I was on the board before, we used to give these out, the board, the citizens picked it up, but that doesn't happen anymore, so they came out of my pocket. Presented to Ken Riley in recognition of service to the Nutley Board of Education from 2004 to 2007, and from 2008 to 2011. President of Nutley Board of Education from 2010 to 2011. For your dedicated service, except for the one year you were off. Seems to be Ken's great suggestion that everything took place, everything fell apart when he was off. So except for the one year you were off, you've done a great job, we appreciate it, from your fellow board members.
Anyone else wish to be heard on old business as well?
Yes, since this is my last time at these meetings behind the table, can I say something relative to my experience here on the board? First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the people that are running for the board. I appreciate their courage in running for the board. Secondly, I'd like to thank the citizens that elected me to try to maintain and improve the education here in Nutley, and I hope in some small way I've contributed towards that end. Additionally, I'd like to say throughout my term here on the board, everybody that I met, really, I think, had the interests of the children and the community at heart. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Riley and Dr. Cassell, both of whom were president during my time. I think they did a very good job, and it's not an easy job. And lastly, Mr. Zara, thanks for your inspiring effort in trying to guide the schools through difficult waters. Thanks for everybody.
Well, Walt and Benny and Ken, a pleasure working with you. In fact, I was going to give Ken a free parking pivot from behind Radcliffe School tonight. But Ken's been a driving force, believe me, a good, positive driving force, and we've got a lot accomplished this past year. Ken, my hat's off to you. Tough job, you did a good job.
Thank you.
And also something I want to make sure we don't miss, and I'm sure all of you have something to say about this, but I might as well start it off. Under superintendent's resolutions, retirement of Joe Zara. Joe, I don't know what to say, except that, you know, in the Navy, we talk about being an officer and a gentleman. And you're truly an officer and a gentleman. You certainly brought us through some very difficult times, through turbulent times, but you know what? I want to be the first to stand up and give you a standing ovation. Job well done. Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I'd also like to thank Benny, Walt, Kenny for their service. Benny, we've gone a long way, man, me and you, from one side of the table to the other side. I will say that I enjoyed working with you, I know that I always count on you. Walt, he's my chemistry teacher, he makes sure that it's fast, and a good job.
Tell you everything you know about chemistry.
Yes, you do. And Mr. Riley for his leadership. Friends with Ken for a long time, and he did a great job. He will be missed, and if he decides to come back again, I'm sure there'll be a spot for you. And Mr. Zara, same thing, we enjoyed your superintendent, we enjoyed getting along together, everything that we had in our meetings, always a gentleman, and we've got a lot of respect. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I defer to you, Mr. Mascarotola.
I just wanted to say thank for all the kind words ever said tonight. Walt, Kenny, nice time serving too, Tommy, you too, back with Charlie after many, many years. I just wish you guys luck, and the new board is really, they've had a lot of work at it. Thank you for everything.
If I could just finish up, this is just a wonderful community, it really is, and I'm always in awe and admiration of public servants, I truly am. They risk running, they really put themselves out there, and they do it because they have this drive to make a difference. And whether it's past board members, present board members, the party board members or future board members, your responsibilities are great, your enthusiasm is also great, and your concern for the students and the teachers and the community are, it makes a difference. I've had the advantage in this job for the last six and a half years, or many, many of my years before that in Nutley, of traveling throughout the state, academic events, athletic events, superintendents, meetings, whatever. And every time people hear the word Nutley, they are very, very favorably disposed to make wonderful comments about the schools, and the community, and the people in it. We all have spent an awful lot of time together. I think on a slow day, I talked to Ken about six or seven or eight times on a very slow day. The phone starts ringing 7:30 in the morning, and finishes up at 11:00 at night, and those aren't bothersome calls, those are calls of concern, or information, or planning, or thinking, and not only Ken, but all of the board. These people deserve far more thanks and appreciation than they get, they've certainly earned it. This is a very big endeavor, this is the biggest operation in this community. It is the largest employer, it is the biggest budget, and it has the greatest impact on the future of the lives of the children entrusted to this district and its people, and in the future of the station on a very small level of the board. So I'd like to thank, and certainly I'll have an opportunity in the next month or two to say a few things, particularly at the end, but I'd like to thank and congratulate Benny, Walt, and Ken, and wish this board and the future board members the very, very best of luck. This is a community that really has to pull together. I've always said all of this is smarter than one of us, and many times we've shown it, and other times perhaps we haven't, but I think fortunately, we've shown it more than we have it, and that's made a difference. So again, thank you, and the best of luck to everyone.
And then, anyone with their name? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Parisi, thank you, Mr. Allo, board members, Joe Zara, Karen Unis, all the administrator staff, the EAM. This has been, for me, just an incredible 12 months. There's been a lot that's happened, and it's just super exciting for me to be able to walk out that door tonight and know that Dr. Librera told us that there's a very bright future for the Board of Education of Nutley. I anticipate that the new board will feel, and anticipate that they're going to be as excited as the nine of us were when we interviewed this person, and we hope that, at least me personally, I really hope that he comes. He's young, he's bright, he's articulate, he's intelligent, he's received rave reviews from every district that he's ever worked at, and he's an incredible, incredible talent, and this board will be served in a positive fashion for years to come, if and when this does occur. Just a minor housekeeping, I received a letter from three sixth grade students at that Radcliffe School about early dismissal, because we have an early dismissal policy, but not an early dismissal plan. So today, I directed the superintendent to get together with the policy chairperson, Mr. Spazato, to put in an early dismissal plan, so that if something does happen, like a couple of weeks ago when we had a power outage, there's actually a plan where parents are notified. So a lot of legal issues and Mr. Romaco will have to get involved in with executing that, but I think that's something that's smart and needs to be done. I'm sorry it hasn't been done already. I just want to say a few things. You know, future boards and past boards, it's really, it's enjoyable, there's a lot that we do, and you know, you'll never understand what goes on behind the scenes like Sal and Jerry and Jerry do, until you get here, if you do get here. But at the end of the day, I pulled out this newspaper today, and this is a newspaper from a year ago, and just so that you don't think I'm biased, I actually pulled out both newspapers. And I wanted to look back, because you know, a year ago, we kind of made some promises to the public, that we were going to try to change some things at the Board of Education. And one of the things that we addressed last year was restoring the public trust, because the perception was that there was a lack of public trust when it came to the Board of Education. And I believe collectively, we've accomplished that goal, that first goal, and I thank my nine board members in the administration for accomplishing that. Another item was forming an academic and technology committee, of which Dr. Reed and Mr. Cook were instrumental in moving this district forward, and I thank you two guys for that. The two guys have done, along with the administration and educators, a tremendous job in taking the quantum leap forward for academics and technology, which will continue, I'm sure. Mr. Rogers and Mrs. Russo were responsible for the child wellness and health and fitness, and have sat with the mayor many times, and our food service, and that has improved as well, so I thank them for that. Another issue, which is a hot button, and I'll make this quick, I'm not going to drag this out, but you know, was our green initiative, and that's manifested itself in the way of a second question in two days to deal with solar. So we held true to that commitment, and if everybody's happy paying five and six and seven dollars a gallon for gas, gasoline to fill their cars, where you know, those supplies will be depleted probably before the end of my lifetime, you know, we have to go solar, we have to go green. It's not an option. Obviously, the two newspapers said not to vote for that, I couldn't disagree more. Of course, they didn't expand and tell us what we should do, they just said it's not the right time. As far as I'm concerned, that's a bad answer. This is the right time, this is the only time, now is the time. Okay. Municipal Alliance, Mr. Spazato, myself, I've sat with commissioners many times, I've been to many commissioner meetings, in improving our shared services. I'll tell you where it got us. We currently share some services, but we need to expand on those. We actually, because Mr. Zara and I took the steps with getting ahold of the superintendents and board presidents of Bloomfield and Belville, which that meeting fell through because of a snowstorm, but because of that meeting, I believe that Nutley, Belville, and Bloomfield commissioners actually got together and had a meeting and made some strides. And I predict that it won't be long before we are sharing services with other school districts. I would tell you that, I believe that within 24 months, you're going to see shared services, whether it's secretarial staff, whether it's transportation, whether it's phone service, whatever it is, that's an area that we need to move forward and continue the work that this board has done. Policy adherence, Mr. Mascarotola has overseen that this year, and a very nice job, thank you very much for that. Construction, you know, I have to tell you that it's just incredible that this board and these administrators, and I don't think he's here, Mr. Nicolet, but Phil has overseen this project since its inception, since back to the high school science wing referendum question, and I think that he's made himself sick by the amount of time he's put into this project. It is coming to closure this summer with the second half of the HVAC at the high school, and I'm proud to announce that this project of $38 million and change is going to be completed on time and under budget, which is just an incredible task for a $38 million project. So I thank everyone, including the professionals who are involved in that. And since Jerry Del Tufo is sitting here, I'd like to thank him for that too, because before I was chairperson of the construction facilities committee, it was his leadership that took us through the first couple of questions. So Jerry, thank you very much, you did a fantastic job, despite a bit kidding that we do about the year I took off, but it's, I think we've made tremendous strides this year, and I thank everybody for it, and I hope that the newly elected officials continue to be a part of this board, and I'm sure that they will. Any new business to speak to? Seeing that, we're going to move into executive, I thank everyone for coming to congratulate the kids again.